Great, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the April fourteenth zoning board hearing. We have a couple of announcements. First, we'll do the general business. We need a motion on approval for the minutes of last meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary of a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. This can be signed, Cal. For the purposes of the applications and the applicants tonight, the, um, all the notices for the hearings tonight have gone out. The, um, to all the abuddies as well. I think there was a small hiccup with the hearing being posted outside Town Hall. The requirement is a forty-eight hour posting outside as a public forum area. It was time stamped accordingly fine within forty-eight hours, however, it didn't get posted outside until twenty-four hours. So each applicant has the availability to continue to be heard tonight, but also please understand that it's a possibility someone could appeal any decisions that are made. I don't see that happening, but it's just that we didn't hit that forty-eight hour posting outside. The, all the advertisements, all the abutting aspects, that's all been completed and in timely matter. It's just that piece of paper didn't get posted outside in the front board. Okay? So with that, um, this is on the hearing for seven-ten on the application of Michael and Robin Tessino. Are they here?
Dave, you're gonna wel- welcome-
Come on in.
You're gonna welcome a new member?
Oh, I forgot that. Forgot to welcome the new member. John, Mr. Annie, welcome.
Thank you.
And congratulations to Mark for full-time appointment.
Thank you.
And we hope and that Brian gets the, gets on as a full-time member as well and Charlie. Eventually we all get on, we'll all leave.
Mm-hmm.
So with that, um, did you understand my, my comment concerning the posting outside? Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, thank you.
All right, this is on the application of Michael Robert Tessino of twenty-nine Emmons Street in Milford. Special permit relief pursuant to three point one of the zoning bylaws in relation to a parcel land on Emmons Street known in numbers twenty-nine. Special permit relief is sought in order to permit an addition and/or an extension or other change on the structure to extend previous existing non-conforming structure to match the existing building line. Said extension and addition is to be used for a garage under with a kitchen extension above. It's going through the file. Let me first comment that the, on the panel tonight will be the full, the five full-time members since we're all in attendance. And secondly, I'll go right to the application. This looks like an application is gonna be for a ten, uh, twenty by twenty, uh, twenty by twenty-five one car garage, additional kitchen extension above the garage. The applicant was asked, please explain the special permit sought in harmony with the general purpose of the zoning bylaw of the town of Milford. The applicant states that the proposed addition is for a garage under with kitchen extension above. No additional dwelling units or bedrooms will be added. Concerning would the proposed use be on the premises not create undue traffic or impair pedestrian safety? The applicant states no additional units or occupants are proposed and at that point it's, and the proposed is to the rear of the dwelling away from the street and sidewalks. Concerning would there be any, create any nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public? The applicant states the proposed addition will not be placed any closer to the lot lines and no additional units or bedrooms are to be proposed. With that, um, the planning board reviewed this at their regular scheduled meeting and did indicate a favorable recommendation. Town plan a letter indicates, um, the applicant requested a twenty by twenty-five two-story addition to the existing two-family dwelling on the subject property. The addition will extend an existing building line which is six feet from the side, north side property line, ten foot side yard setback is required. The proposed two-story addition will be back, will be at the back of the existing structure and will consist of a garage on the first floor. The, the second floor will contain a kitchen for the upstairs dwelling unit. Zoning bylaw provides for such additions of non-conforming buildings via a special permit provided to the extensions of existing buildings and lines. Larry Duncan did recommend a favorable report which went off to the zoning board of appeal. So with that, Mr. and Mrs. Tessino, we'll, we'll, um, we'll give you the floor. Please give us an indication. I see we have a drawing in the file. Is there anything else you want to present?
I brought some pictures of the existing, um-
Okay, why, you wanna start or pass it over?
Sure, I only have four.
That's okay. We'll pass it around, give them back to you.
You can have them, I just didn't copy enough. So, um, the, uh, the blue line, it's drawn over the first page, the first picture, uh, that's the existing, uh, elevation. Yeah, so that blue line indicates what, uh, if I had to meet the setback where the addition is, and it ends up right in the middle of those windows where we'd like to extend the kitchen. The second page, we don't have a set of drawings yet, so we just superimposed what the addition would look like.
And that's the addition?
That's the addition.
Superimposed on the site?
Superimposed on the, on the building, yes.
Okay.
And the other, um, in red on page one, it says bedrooms. The other issue with trying to slide it all the way over is we block, um, that existing bedroom windows, which, uh, we cannot do.
All right, Charlie, I'll start on your end of the table if you'd like to make some comments or ask some questions.
Yeah, I have one question, um, which is a nice thing to do, which is the second drawing, okay? That really explains it. Now, there is a jet out that comes down, I assume that's part of the garage underneath?
Yes.
Okay. And then my question is, is that looking at this, the twenty-five feet that you're talking about must include that this way, right?
It's, it's twenty-five feet longways, yes.
Right, so the actual kitchen is gonna be less than twenty-five feet on top?
The kitchen's gonna be about fifteen by twenty. Those red lines are just a deck railing.
Yeah, no, that's, oh, that's, good, okay. That's it. Thank you.
All right.
How many dwelling units do you have in the building right now?
It's a two-family.
Two-family?
Um, just, uh, the house has been in our family for seventy-five years. We had a decision to make, should we stay or should we go? Our kids are almost through, they're with college. So we decided to stay because we're attached to the house, it's been in the family so long. And, uh, we just tried to make the kitchen a little bit bigger. Those windows that I drew the blue line through, that actually, that room is actually about six feet wide, so that's the room we were trying to make, uh, larger.
Thank you.
Mark? Just so I got my brain clarified. Can you see that, Michael?
No. Twenty years ago I could.
Yeah, me too. Would be happy if I had a plan though. Right here, this, this is the house and it jets out right here in the corner.
Yes.
This is just gonna be squared off right to this piece.
Yep.
That's all I need to know. All right, thank you. So what's on that floor now? Is there a kitchen there now on that floor?
There's a, yeah, there's a kitchen already there. The area where those four windows are, where I drew the blue line through, is like a, just an eating area, but it's very small. It's only about six feet wide. In an old house, they made rooms small back then. So we just looking, our addition is gonna kind of be a, an eating area and like a living room type, uh, one big open room.
So I guess the question is, adding the garage under, was that just a matter of convenience?
Well, we're on the second floor, so-
Right.
My option was to put the whole thing on stills of four by fours or, you know, make use of that area with a garage.
Okay.
No, I'm all set, I, all my questions have been answered.
I'm all set.
No questions.
I have one question. Egress out of the basement. Is that any access out of the basement?
Yeah, the new addition will, um, the basement will have a garage door and a regular service door.
Thank you.
Mike, another question before I, I turn it over to people in the audience. The existing shed that's on the property right now does not conform, correct?
Right.
Is that on concrete? Or is that on the shed?
It's on, uh, concrete piers. My grandfather built it probably seventy years ago. Assuming you asked that question, to say it was movable. I guess it could be moved, but it would be expensive because, um, it's an old.
How big is that?
Uh, it's about eight by ten, eight by twelve. Under a hundred square feet.
Okay, anybody in the audience wanna be heard on this application? If not, um, you have the last word before we close the hearing and we take it under advisement.
Well, we, you know, asked for a favorable, um, vote on our application. Again, you know, the house has been in my family for seventy-five years. We decided to stay instead of move. This just makes our living arrangements a little more comfortable. We don't think that it interferes with, uh, the neighborhood. It's in the back of the house. It should maybe help the safety of congestion issues. So, do you have a vote?
Okay, great. All right, we'll close the hearing. Couple of comments on, if you wanna go right to the, right to voting on this, I'm fine with it. I have a couple of comments. Not having a set of plans, I would make that a condition if we, if the board decided they wanted to go down that road to approve. In addition to that, it shall only be a single-story structured, um, area concerning where the kitchen is and not, um, having any access from the second-floor apartment whatsoever. That's what your plan was, I'm assuming, correct?
I didn't understand that.
Well, you've gotten this, you're, you're carrying this all the way up to the second story.
Right, so the first, the basement's gonna be about twelve feet high.
Right.
Basement ceiling.
So you're not gonna be tying in any of this to the second floor?
That part of it, to, to our kitchen, yeah.
You said you're on the main level here.
No, no.
He considers that the second floor.
It's the second, well, it's a walkout, so the third floor, but really, because it's a walkout basement.
Right. Is that your question, Dave?
Yeah, it was.
And what is this?
A deck.
So you're putting a deck on top of this?
Yes.
As well?
Yes.
That deck have stairs?
No. We already have, uh, two ways out of dwelling unit.
Okay. All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Who's on this one, Dave?
Huh?
Who's on this?
Uh, five, uh, the voting, voting members are the full five members.
Okay.
Full-time members.
I'll make a motion to go forward with this, subject to them, um, having some plans, so we know exactly-
And plan approval by the building-
And plan approval by the building department.
Anybody else? Second on that or no?
I'll second.
You don't have a second?
Yeah.
You have a second? Okay. All those in favor, should anybody, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, you know, another decision, twenty-day appeal period.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Okay. Right on to the second hearing on time, I believe. Again, gentlemen, I, I'm just checking, everybody have any conflicts on this hearing? If not, we'll keep it the same. You got it? Okay. This is on the application of American Power. What's going up front, sir? Okay, American Power LP and American Towers LLC Special Permit Relief pursuant to section three point one of the zoning bylaw in relation to the property one-twenty Highland Street, also known Hundred Highland Street, shown on the assessors map thirty-six lot twenty-five. The special permit is relief is sought for the altercation of a non-conforming structure and use through the replacement of an existing three-hundred-foot AGL guided tower with a modern self-supporting lattice tower at the height of three hundred feet. AGL included the relocation and the replacement of an existing antennas and equipment from the existing three-hundred-foot guide tower to a new self-support lattice tower. You being represented by counsel or anything tonight? When you're doing this on your own?
I'll be doing it on my own. Matt Russell from American Towers is here with me.
Okay, great. Okay, I'll just shoot right to the application. And the question asked by the applicant, the reasons that the special permit is sought in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. The replacement of the existing non-conforming guided tower with a self-supporting structure will dramatically reduce the overall tower footprint on the site and will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming guided tower, guide wires and anchors. Concerning the question, um, the proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. The applicant states there'll be no change in the amount of traffic generated as a result of the protected problem. Concerning the proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the general public. The applicant states there'll be no change in the use of the premises as a result of the proposed project. With that, um, in the file, I believe they, down in front of the planning board, the planning board did review this on their March twenty-ninth hearing and, um, they did, uh, they did provide to give us a favorable recommendation. The proposal to replace the three-hundred-foot guide wire with a new three-hundred-foot self-supporting lattice tower. The new lattice tower is to be constructed adjacent to the existing tower. The antennas and equipments will be relocated from the old tower to the new tower, but the, the old tie of guide wires and anchors will then be removed from the site. The proposed tower will not be more noticeable than the existing tower. The fall zone for the three-hundred-foot lattice tower is calculated to be a hundred and twenty feet, well within the limits of the spa, of the parcel on which it is located. Therefore, a favorable recommendation was motioned to move over from town planner Larry Duncan. So with that, let's turn it over to you, sir, and kind of explain to us your format, what you're taking down, what you're putting up, and have, make sure the public can see that. If you can't get them on camera, would you give us an idea so that we can make sure the public sees this as well? Okay. That looks good. Looks visible.
Okay, let me, uh, try to get out of the way a little bit.
Can you, can you grab one of those hand microphones? Thank you.
Read us good, right?
Name's good.
Uh, so first of all, my name is Ed Paree, it's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick representing American Tower. Back in the nineteen-sixties, prior to all of the cell phone services, et cetera, there was a tower constructed at the, on the lot. And just to clarify for the board members who don't deal with this all of the time, this is considered a guide tower. So it's a, it's a tower that has a very small footprint but requires guide wires. So over time, uh, as maintenance or the tower has to be strengthened, additional guide wires are attached. So I'm gonna put up this plan because you can't really see the guide wires in the photo, but this is an elevation depiction of the existing guide tower. So you have the steel that runs up from the ground, and then you have these guide wires which are anchored. And I refer to the anchors pretty frequently in the application materials, they're big blocks of cement holding the steel cables. So to give you a perspective of what the plan is, we currently have, and this is a, uh, overhead view, Highland Street runs here, water tank is here, the sort of where the three guide wires come together in the middle of the plot is where the tower is located. And you'll see that these black lines depict where the guide wires go, and then they're anchored in three spots. What we're proposing to do is to put a self-supporting tower, which is a more modern tower, we don't need guide wires. It's freestanding, it'll have, it'll be on three legs, which is why we represent it with the triangle here. So we're shifting it about twenty-five feet to the south. Once we do that and get it constructed and get the carriers and the users of the guide tower over to the new structure, we're gonna remove the guide tower. So this will eventually be replaced.
Totally.
Totally. It'll be gone, the anchors will be removed, the guide wires will be gone.
Can I see that plan? Can I have that?
This, certainly.
Thanks.
So this is a, did you have, do you wanna, do you have questions for us or you wanna continue?
No, go ahead.
So this is the overall site plan of the property. Again, the center of the property is where the guide wire, the guide tower is located and just to the south is where the self-supporting tower is proposed. Again, the guy, the guy wires will be removed. And looking at the elevation of the self-supporting tower as we had the guide tower here, it'll have a larger base, but there'll be no guy wires coming out towards the property lines. So the goal is to reduce or make less detrimental the replacement of the guide tower with the self-supporting tower, move the carriers, move the users of the tower over to the new tower, remove the old one, and we think it'll be a substantial improvement to the neighborhood, significantly reducing the overall footprint of these guy wires and anchor. That's pretty much the gist of it. The tower was constructed sometime in the sixties. It's old, it needs to be replaced, it's at capacity. We have done all we can to strengthen it. So at this point, the tower just frankly needs to be replaced. And this is the more modern version of these guy towers. As I mentioned in our, uh, application materials, it's a non-conforming use, it's a non-conforming structure, uh, so the board's charge is to make a finding that the use in the structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there currently. I do have some photographs, we have extras for folks in the audience. These are all, these are all the same pictures. It's all the same. You just have to-
Who owns the land that the tower's on?
American, uh, American Tower owns the land, American Tower owns the tower.
Okay.
One's the limited partnership, one's an LLC, I believe.
How many ca, how many different carriers are on the tower?
There, there are quite a few. We have, for example, we have Verizon, Metro PCS, what used to be Nextel is now Sprint. We have Emergency Services, EMT. There are a significant number of users.
Will the new tower be able to accommodate more pe, more users?
It would, it'll be, it'll be stronger, so as the, as you've probably seen, the wireless carriers have upgraded, continue to add equipment up on the tower, so yet it'll have more capacity, certainly.
Well, how much more capacity, like thirty, forty percent or?
Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's hard to tell, it's a, I mean, it's got a lot of stuff on it already and will, uh, so the goal is to take care of our existing tenants. It's a hard question to answer, how many, but certainly it'd be able to accommodate more. There are some limitations due to height. So these antennas, as you see, get staggered, so you can't put AT&T and then put Verizon right underneath it, there has to be some separation. General rule of thumb is ten feet. So you do have some limitation about how much you can get up there. But it's, could certainly accommodate more. We could have a situation where, you know, somebody up in this area comes off the tower, which would make available, you know, additional space for somebody else.
What about this other tower?
Uh, that other tower's on a different property, that's, uh-
It's not part of that, yours?
It's not part of ours, no. What's interesting, the water department, I don't know if it's a town property or private water, has the water tank and they have a tower next door to it. I think there's only one carrier on it.
And currently, right now, when I went in there, it's, you have a, you have a fence gate down here?
We do.
Is that gonna continue to stay?
It will, except the tower will actually be shifting to that side, so we'll have to make some modification. It will be fenced, you know, the expensive part of the, uh, development is the equipment at the base of it, so we'll have to make some changes, but it will, the tower will continue to be fenced in.
And how much, that new tie, what will, what will the tower have around it, the security?
Uh, it'll be the same fences we have.
Same fence?
Yes. It'll be extended over to pick up the tower.
Okay. Dave? We'll start with you, Charlie?
Oh, all right. Will there be much disruption to the neighborhood with the installation of this tower, bringing in that equipment and so forth?
There won't. One thing we, I mean, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out the best way to handle this, uh, so we moved it, this is cleared already, so we tried to keep as much tree cover as we could and maintain it. Uh, so we chose this particular location, obviously that we already have the access road there. So it'll be a matter of some excavation to get the site ready around the tower location. We don't have to do a lot of movement because the equipment is all close by. The new tower would be adjacent to all of those equipment cabinets and equipment shelters. There'll be cement trucks going in to get it, to get the foundation in place. The tower will be stacked, you know, relatively quickly. So there won't be significant, not significant, uh-
And I would assume it's brought in, uh, basically in pieces on, on flatbeds?
Correct.
So you'll have to get a crane at least that can reach up to the top of that and set it down on it?
Yes.
My, go ahead, Brian.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mark?
Good questions, you got any? Three hundred feet high.
Correct.
Where's the nearest property, personal property?
Uh, the nearest property-
Approximately how many feet away?
Tell you exactly. The property, the closest property line's a hundred and twenty-six feet from the new tower.
A hundred and twenty-six feet.
One twenty-six.
And your breakoff zone on, if we have a natural disaster as specified, is one twenty?
Correct. The engineers designed the tower, well, you can sort of see it on this, uh, on this satellite shot, there's a red circle here, uh, and you'll see it on your site plan also. That's the limitation of the hundred and twenty-foot fall zone. And you'll see it's within all of the, uh, it's on the American Tower parcel.
I'm not sure one twenty-six is right, let me just check.
No, one twenty. Well, one twenty was the break-
I was, uh, I was just looking for, yeah, it's a hundred and twenty, which fits, which fits on the American Tower property, but you asked how far away the-
Nearest homeless.
Nearest.
Well, for, on the plan, from the, on the plan from the center to act, to an actual house, you're showing two hundred and sixty, two hundred and forty?
Yeah, I'm talking about the property line, let me-
Right.
I, I could pick it out quickly. Yeah, the closest, I'm measuring from the closest, uh, leg of the new self-supporting tower to the property assessors thirty-six, four-four, eight, um, the Maranta, Marantas, it's a hundred and twenty-six feet from that point.
To their property line, right?
To their property line, correct.
The, um, the failure rate on these is what?
Well, pretty much zero. I mean, they're designed not, they're designed not to fail.
Not a natural disaster.
Correct.
Okay. And these are deemed to be much more safer or better than what's currently there, not what's currently there, but the current design that's there.
Oh, so, oh, much better than the guide tower, without question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Couple of questions on the lighting aspect. The flashing beacons, I see you've got them at certain levels. You've got a mid-level LED flash heads at a hundred and fifty feet. It's showing on the plant, and then you've got it at the top of it?
Yes.
So how many actually, how much, how much does this light up? Does it, will it impede? Does it, will it impede any, any bright, very bright lights to any of the neighbors?
No, I mean, it's, any of the towers that are over 200 feet have a light, you know, are lit.
Yeah, they have.
From the FAA requirements, so we satisfy those requirements. I haven't run into situations where, you know, we've had issues or complaints. It's more just a marking for the, you know, airplanes and, you know, required. So I don't, again, I, I've never heard of a situation where we've had complaints over the FAA lighting.
There's no floodlights, though, correct?
Yeah, there's no, no, there's no floodlights.
No floodlights coming out of the town?
No, there are none.
I, I just had one question. About how long does it take for you to install this and then remove the other? Are we talking like weeks, months?
60 days?
Probably 30 to 60 days, though.
Okay, so a couple of months? All right. And all the access will be from Highland Street?
Correct.
Hey, I do want to be clear, we need to construct, you know, the, the, there are current users on the guide poles, so we'll construct the new one. There'll be some period of time where the two poles will be up there, but then the, it will be removed.
Well, that was going to be my question, did the leases affect that? The current leases affect the transfers over to the new pole?
Oh, certainly. I mean, they...
So this could be a two-year process, is what, that's what we're asking?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's a 30 to 60-day process to stack the new self-supporting tower, we'll then move everybody over and remove the tower, so the leases will transfer over to the new tower. Whatever people have left are just coming to the new tower. So if that's your concern, no, that's not. It's not going to stay up for two more years.
My concern is for disruption to the neighborhood there, if this is going to be going on for a couple of years, that...
No.
Well, I wanted to be able to have a condition in there that, that after so many days of the new tower going online, demolition occurs and that, that all site is removed. So that's, there needs to be some language in your decision concerning that.
When you, when you go to the public comment, I'll pay attention to the questions, but I'll, I'll see if we can come up with a timeframe and we can...
Okay.
...give the board sense.
Okay. Dave, John, John?
300-foot tower, is that a standard tower? Or are you only going 300 feet? Because there's already a 300-foot tower there.
I, that is a lot of it, there's a 300-foot tower there, and we have leases for our current tenants up at the top, so we're above typical wireless tower. This is not a typical wireless tower, if you ask me if it's typical. They're typically 199 feet. So in this instance, we have 300 feet, we have tenants that will use the space up at the top, up to 300 feet. We think it's a vast improvement from the guy wires and the guide itself, the guide tower itself.
Are there benefits to 300 feet as opposed to the 190?
Well, we have, we have tenants that need the height, so...
That's what I'm saying.
Right, these are not wa, these are not all wireless, as you'll see, the antennas are a bit different. If you look at the kind of fence-looking installation running here, that would be typ, your typical AT&amp;T and Verizon. But we have other tenants that need additional height, paging companies, EMT, and you'll see these, more as whip, what we call whip antennas, which are just those single poles. But towers are, it really depends what it's being used for. You see the ones in Newton, you know, they're 1400 or 1500 feet, so when you, when you ask, is it typical? They're all different, some are 90 feet, some are 1500.
The town of Milford need, need access for that?
We'd certainly be happy to talk to them if they, you know, need service.
Use your private.
Now, we don't, you know, I could tell you, I don't know who is on this tower. From my experience, I see there are two carriers up at the top, and then there are microwave dishes, so it's possible your police and fire are using that tower also. I, I don't know.
Would you provide a location for them on this town?
I think we would work with the town. If they could contact us.
I think that would be the, the business aspect of what you, what...
We do it frequently, if...
Someone should offer...
If there are public safety needs, we're happy to discuss that with police, fire, and emergency personnel.
Questions? Dave, any more?
No.
Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to the public comments. Anybody in the audience, sure, please stand up, provide your name, and ask away.
I'm Tom Montagani. If they want, could you put that plot, overhead plot thing up there? Yeah, just, yep, that's one. That blue spot right up on the top, right up on the very top center, is a pool in my backyard. Bought the house in 1980. Western Union owned that tower, first of all, it was a microwave tower from Western Union. That area in the back was always kept clear. It was mowed, it kept, maybe it got up to two feet, but that was always kept clear. It was a clear area in the back, and I was told originally it was supposed to be left that way. That's how Lane got permission to build all his houses. All that being said, I don't know if that's written down anywhere, that area stayed clear for many years. When that second tower was built, nobody took care of that property more. That green you see there, now all of a sudden it's got a pool, I can't go in after 6 o'clock because the mosquitoes are all back. Hornets are back, rabbits in the backyard, poison ivy all over the place, and ticks. Now, I've spoken, spoken to the health department, they just feel it went back to natural state, there's nothing they can do about it, and there probably isn't anything they can do about it. What they've done with that property, I should say didn't do with that property, perfectly legal. That's all I'm saying is, and our, and our feeling is, American Tower is not a good neighbor, and in fact, that, that is disruptive. It's not the tower, never worried about the tower, although my mother-in-law did, she always thought it was going to fall on the house, but I never worried about the tower, the towers are not disruptive, those lights don't bother anybody, at least, and we have a clear shot from where we are to the top of that tower. It's not a problem. The problem is the rest of the property. I'm just curious if they have any plans to try and put that property back to where it was when they bought it, because they haven't done anything to it since then. It's a constant struggle with poison ivy, it's a constant struggle with the animals in the backyard, and I am just curious. As far as the tower goes, I don't have a problem with the tower.
I have a quick question for you, is it fenced back there?
No.
It's just naturally treated?
Yeah. So you, you got to keep the poison ivy from approaching back on. When they were, I don't know who mowed the grass, I have no idea, whether it was Western Union or the town or whatever, I have no idea. But we put a fence up on the back, so I started mowing six feet outside, so the tractor who was pulling the stuff around would, would have an easier job doing it. So I've always mowed in the back. Now it's a matter of, I have to mow, I have to cut back bushes, I have to spray poison ivy every year to keep it off the property. As I said, I've spoken to the health department...
It's out of control.
Yeah, yeah, just, there's, dogs used to run out there, occasionally get ticks, they don't go out there anymore because there's no way to go through that. It's, it's, it has gone back to its natural state, although prior to it being mowed down, it was an apple orchard, so I'm not sure that is natural state, because it was an apple orchard. I, that's, that's my only question, I, as far as the towers go, I don't have a problem with the tower.
Sure, what number are you on Stanford?
One.
Number one?
And ironically, it's the very end of the circle, we're a cul-de-sac and they're numbered backwards, so...
Sure, thank you for your comments, very helpful.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, sir, you have the last word before we...
I, I did talk to Matt about the construction piece of things. I think we just have to be careful with the wording if, if we could, but we could, we could certainly, once this tower's stacked and the tenants are moved over, which is not a leasing issue, but just getting everybody over onto the new tower, we could remove the other tower within 90 days. Eric?
Okay, so you're talking 60 days to put it up and then 90 more days?
Yeah.
90 more days, once we get everybody...
You're talking five months to get the whole thing? I just, I'm just...
Well, that's why we, that's why we need to be a little careful, because we need to, we need to move the people that are on the guy, we need to put the new tower in place, which we anticipate 60 days.
Okay.
We need to move the, everybody over to the new tower, get them functional. That could take a little time, not a lease or two-year time period, but some period of time to get everybody over, the cables...
We need to have some guide time.
And then from that point, everybody's moved, we can start tearing it down, it'll be gone in 90 days.
Now, what about addressing Mr. Mr. Montagani's situation over there about clearing out that, some of that stuff over there and trying to make their lives a little bit easier living without overgrowth?
Can you show me on the map?
Would it be helpful to have a fence put up there, or...
It's, it's unlikely that American Tower clears, clears anything, because they do towers and then let it go.
I know, I understand that. This is the, this is the property here, okay? These trees are in, we have a fence right here, and these trees are inside the fence, this little barrier here is where I plot. Somebody cleared that out last year sometime. Got up in the morning on a Monday, it was all cleared, everything's been pushed back here. That was not done by American Tower, to the best of my knowledge. So there's a, you know, there's a little access around here and around, but I just tried to keep that clear, but this whole area here, not from, on this side here, this was all field, they bought it, that's what it was. You're in the tower business.
Exactly.
I understand that. I don't have a problem with the towers. The towers, the construction of the towers isn't going to be a problem either. This is very annoying because all of a sudden I have a backyard that I'm going to use.
If we can, if we can satisfy, and I'm, I'm asking a question, if we can satisfy the two abuddars over there and maybe, you know, give them some safety of saying, you know, let's clear out 10 feet further from his property line back and keep that clean and free of debris, would that help?
Yeah, I'll clear out. I just don't want somebody from American Tower all of a sudden yelling at me in the laundry property because...
They shouldn't have to, they should...
Well, I, it, I do it anyway because I have to, to keep the stuff. And I have, this, I have a couple of trees that overhang, and I keep them trimmed on their side, but they overhang. It's not, this isn't as dense right here as, as it looks, but it's, as far as the, you know, the, the mosquitoes, the ticks, the poison ivy, it's, it's never any battle unless you, unless you go back to the field. Yeah, I, if it got moved back 10 feet, it would make it a little bit easier.
You have a chain-linked fence, sir?
No, it's a wood, stockade-type.
So...
We have, we would have no issue with him maintaining that and clearing it?
Having access?
Absolutely not.
Then, then you'll be able to, you'll be, he'll be entitled to adverse possession.
But I, it's really, it's not as hard as it looks, especially because when they, when they did this, they took down three up here.
That's fine.
It's a...
So if I put a condition that he's got, he's got, you know, access, 10-foot access to maintain around his personal property, would that be okay?
That would be fine with us.
That's, just being a good neighbor.
Absolutely.
Is 10 enough, or do you need 20?
Now's the time.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend 15, so I'll tell you right now.
Whenever they, I go back as far as I, I can.
I, I just, I don't want, I don't want, you want, you want kind of what you were there before, so if we need to give you 15 feet or so or 20 feet to work with, so you've got some, you're not getting everything into, into your... I think that'll be fine.
Then that's fine with us.
Okay, perfect.
Dave, can I say one thing? My stipulation would be 15 feet back, American Tower clears it, you maintain it. That's my stipulation.
Yeah, I could go for that. He's got to be able to close the meeting.
No. I don't think there'd be a problem with that, I mean, I think they're going to be good neighbors.
We don't have a problem with it.
Fencing, are you going to do new fencing, or, because I know, I went up there, the, the fences are pretty rotted and rusted and around that area, a couple of the gates, one of the gates was totally damaged. I would assume that you're going to be, you're going to probably want new security.
We are, because we'll be bringing the fence down to, you know, further south to, you know, pull in, so we'll repair and replace what we need to with, as far as what's in behind, again, that will probably occur once we get this big thing out of there.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, with that, if you're good, we're good?
I'm good, and thank you very much for your attention.
We'll close the hearing and if board members want to, do you want to handle this after next hearing, or do you want to handle this now?
I'm going to do it now.
Okay.
So what were they, Mark had something?
All right, so, we're gonna, we're gonna provide, American Power will...
90 days from...
First of all, we're going to have American Power clear 20, clear out 20 feet on the abuddar's property of one Sanford Circle, and he will maintain it once it's cleared out. That way there, he doesn't have a heart attack trying to clear that stuff out, and you shouldn't have to. That's fine. The other condition that I'll recommend is that the old tower to be removed...
No, going back, why don't you list the address and Mr. Montagani's name?
I do, I have it here.
Okay, all right, okay.
The old, the old ad, the old tower to be removed, no later than 90 days after the last vendor attaches to the new tower.
Anything else about fencing?
I'd like to see the fencing, when I was up there, the, some of the gates were destroyed and damaged, and the, some of the fencing was completely rusted out, so I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a condition in there that the, the fencing, the, the new fencing is provided around the new facility. And any additional fencing on the site is to be replaced where needed. And I don't know if you can spray paint it so it's not rusted. Anybody else have anything else? Have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, and then second by Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, congratulations. You know the process for 20-day deal, okay? Great, thanks so much, gentlemen, I appreciate the clarity, and thank you for working with the neighbors, it was very helpful. And I'm sure they, they appreciate it very much.
Okay. Don't want it cleared. Tell me I'm not going to have this next month when I come back.
Not, not the pages, selling crap.
You have to look at it, you know, you're very, very strange. I got problems with my house, guys in my house, I got fisher cats trying to break through the screen.
My son, my son's called it so deep, it's like, my kids all got it.
One night I come home, the fisher cat was right in my front yard staring.
I understand the, I didn't even know.
No, I feel fine, I said, it's all, it's a same with him, it feels like.
I wasn't going outside, it's not as like, even more.
My oldest is a high school teacher, I think he's into everything at this point. My wife's a teacher, in her first year or two, she's like, every 15 minutes, she's got seasoned. I used to, I used to, I never had it, once a year, and then kids are fisher cat on the first time. I haven't, I haven't had it.
Catch up time. Great. With that, we are all set for the next hearing. Thank you, gentlemen, have a great night.
Mr. Chairman, I know you have to open the hearing, but I understand there's posting issues.
Yes, John, you missed it because you were out talking. Posting on the outside board was done in 24 hours, not 48 hours. Therefore, every applicant's been put on notice that an opportunity that may come up, that may, may offer an appeal...
We'll, we'll actually...
You're going to waive that?
...an extension, because it's really not a 48 appeal, it's a, it's a minimum law appeal.
Right, correct.
I'd rather not get into that situation, it's going to be significant financing here, there's going to be an opinion counsel.
You don't want to jeopardize it, right?
Yeah, I don't mind jeopardizing the financing, it's the opinion counsel, I don't want to jeopardize. So, yeah, I, I...
You want to continue?
We can, there's no disability to the applicant by the way, so I would just, just won't be needing it.
Okay, we are opening the meeting on the application of Claflin Street Limited Partnership, Special Premier Relief Relations of Apostle Land located 135 and 7, Sina Holloway in Claflin. And at this point in time, there'll be a continuance on this hearing based on the posting from the open meeting law, and we will push that meeting off to May 12th, Mr. Fernandez.
Are you using your pen?
You need my pen?
I've taken the pen from the purse.
So, we've opened the panel, opened the meeting with all five members, all full-time members.
So, the hearing is till...
May 12. May 12. Congratulations on your retirement. Don't think you're going to be able to impeach if I'm around. Thank you, John. Super, okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, Jack.
All right, gentlemen, that ends our hearing. Your motion by...
Thank you so much.
Goodbye, Dave. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining us. Have a great night.
Steve, you've got to get a name.